Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 16, 2015 meeting of the Revere City Council. Will everyone please rise and salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Role call of the members, Councilor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas. Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Riordan.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Powers.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Calendar item number one, report of the Legislative Affairs and Public Safety Subcommittee.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. If it's okay with my co-chairman, I guess I'll give the report.
Certainly okay with me. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor Patch.
You did a great job.
Thank you. We obviously met in order to discuss the new FODU ordinance that we're about to pass tonight. The committee reported this out unanimously, and we'll be looking for a favorable vote on this ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, any councils on this? Call the roll, please. Audit on a second reading. Audit on a third reading. Audit on final engrossment on ordainment. Roll call.
On engrossment and ordainment, Councilor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been engrossed and ordained. Calendar item number two, the report of the Appointments Subcommittee.
Councilor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this afternoon, the Appointments Subcommittee met, and we had the following appear before us. The first was an appointment of Mr. Lohan Maria, 1123 Revere Beach Parkway, as a constable. I'm going to read these all at once, Mr. President. If there's any objection, if anyone wants anyone called out separately, we will do so. And the next was the appointment of Mr. Vincent Lauria, 302 Vane Street, to the Conservation Commission. Next was the reappointment of Mr. Benjamin D. Cristoforo, 5 Dennett Road Winchester, as the Building Inspector. Reappointment of Ms. Diane Calella, 60 Alston Street Revere, as the Election Commissioner. Reappointment of Caruso Corporation, 320 Chargers Street, as a licensed drain layer. Finally, the reappointment of Chikadi Construction, 145 Burl Street, Swambskett, as a licensed drain layer. I ask that the body take these all at once. If there's any objections, please notify me, and we can take it out.
No objections.
And honestly, they be voted out favorably.
Roll call, the roll, please.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairman Guanasso? Councilor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Riordan is absent. Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers.
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Calendar item number three, communication from the mayor relative to National Kids to Parks Day proclamation.
All in favor of that? So audit.
Calendar item number four, communication from Hope Pressman regarding snow removal and parking on Florence Avenue.
Is there anyone here that... Miss Pressman?
Hi, my name is Hope Presson.
State your name and address, please.
Hope Presson, 20 Florence Avenue, Revere, Mass.
Okay. Go ahead. You want to speak on this, correct?
Yes, I do.
Certainly.
Some of the neighbors and myself...
Turn on the mic, please. Is it on?
Speak into it, please.
Okay. My neighbors... My neighbors and myself have had some complaints about the parking and the snow removal up on Florence Avenue. The parking, to begin with, is bad. We're not one of the streets that has a permit, so people that drive up the street, park and go down to the train station, which makes parking even more limited. During the snow removal, we, the neighbors, all had the... We have some pictures. Had the snow right up to the curb, and then we got pain over some of the cars and trees that they were going to do snow removals, and all the cars had to be taken off the street, which they were. And the next morning, when we went out, we had snowbanks, so that there were two to three feet of snow from the curbing... I guess from the curbing to the street.
Street.
And six parking spots just at the beginning of the street were eliminated because that's where they dropped the snow. And after that, up until then, fire engines, police, ambulances, big delivery trucks, all could get by. Once that was done, nothing could get by. They got partway down... I live at the lower end of Florence. If they got partway down, they couldn't get through because there's parking on both sides, and because of... The snow pushing us out further into the street made it even worse. So they would have to back up the street to James Street and go back down that way. I called the DPW immediately that morning to ask if they could come back and fix just those areas that they left the big mounds in, and no one ever called back. I called the mayor's office to see if somebody in the mayor's office could help. Nobody called me back. And if there was ever a fire up there, we would have been dead.
Well, you know, I am certainly sorry that you had this experience. And I'd like to... Let's talk about the permit parking first, okay? We do not issue permit parking.
Okay. Right. We know about... The permit parking is just... I was just saying that that's why the...
Yeah, that comes from the Traffic Commission.
Right, I knew that.
Now, what I would advise you to do is, the neighbors in the area, get together, get a petition, and if a majority of the neighbors in that area are in favor of resident parking, I'm sure the Traffic Commission would entertain that.
Well, I don't know if you're familiar with Florence Avenue.
I'm not really that familiar with it, no.
It's a very long street.
Yep.
So the people that are affected are the people like from 20 or so, a little past me, down, because that's where they come and park towards the corner of the street so they can walk down Centennial.
I...
So the people at the top of the street don't want permits because they feel they're limited to the number of people that can park near their homes.
I don't know...
Which I understand.
I don't know if the Traffic Commission could, has the jurisdiction to issue permit parking for a certain section of a street. They may very well. That may be something you would want to address with regard to the snow removal and the problems that was caused by that. I mean, this year, we had... In fact, we broke the record, I understand, yesterday with regard to snow in the Commonwealth. And I'm sorry that, you know, when you called the different departments, you had no response. What I would suggest is that... I don't know if you sent a copy of this to the mayor's office or not?
I was told that the mayor gets a copy.
Pardon me?
I was told that the mayor gets a copy of it.
Okay, I would hope so, yeah. And I would hope, and I feel confident, that he would take the time to look at this and address it. Again, you know, it was a very busy month for all of us. I had problems on my own street. Have a problem plowing, and apparatus couldn't get down the street that is, you know, like they normally would. But again, on behalf of the council and the city, I apologize for any inconvenience that was caused, and...
Well, the worst thing was, all I could think of is, I'm a single woman... Three of us actually are. And we... If there was a fire up there, we were trapped.
Yep.
A fire, we couldn't get down because the DPW couldn't come to clean up the little area that they...
Well...
They... Well, I don't know what the word is.
Again...
Right, it was created. All I could think was, oh, my God, what's going to happen if there's ever a fire up here? I'm dead.
Well, again, you know, it's...
Right, we're dead.
I would suggest that, again, you address these concerns to the mayor. He's the administrative head of the city. We... All we do are make laws and ordinances, et cetera. But I'm sure, knowing the mayor as I do, I'm sure he will give this very positive scrutiny and make a judgment on that.
Because it's going to snow, so...
Because it's going to snow again, and, you know...
No, I understand, but the thing is...
Hopefully not this year.
Until they created this problem, we seemed to have no problem with the neighbors shoveling, and we were all close, and cars were going up and down, trucks were going up and down, and then snowplow... Snow removal, and we were in big trouble.
Yeah, it was a busy month, a busy time. They're not perfect. Nothing works perfect, you know, something like that.
I feel we should have gotten some reply from some...
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Councilor Haas, I believe, wants to speak on it.
Just to follow up on you, we established a committee to look at on-street parking, even odd, that will alleviate the problem. This year, we had a record snowfall, as John indicated. Hopefully, it doesn't snow again. But again, I think that was a one-shot deal, and I think that we're all involved with it. We had the problem up where I live, and most of the councils had similar problems, okay? But when you can't get the fire apparatus up, that's a situation, absolutely. We will address it in committee.
Thank you, Councilor Haas. Councilor Riordan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I certainly commiserate with you and your issues on Florence Street. It's been an ongoing problem for we, as Ward councils in particular. Warren Street, at one point, in Ward Four, was exactly the same way. I feared that a fire apparatus, even if it could get up the street, wouldn't be accessible to the firefighters. If a ambulance went up there, they might not be able to get the stuff out of the doors. It was very concerning. And Alston Street was another problem. As Councilor Haas alluded to, this was an extraordinary event. I don't necessarily think that it's not likely to be repeated, but I will say this, that I've talked to my fellow councils and people in the administration, and it's been a wake-up call to us about how we remove snow, how we park cars during snowstorms, how we deal with all of the issues that you've seen. And I think we're going to have to get a plan in place that may include changing some ordinances regarding parking, et cetera, et cetera, on our behalf, just to prevent this from happening in the future, or not necessarily prevent it, because only God can prevent it from happening, I guess. But if it does happen, from having it have a much better, less egregious effect on the way we have to live, if it does happen again. So again, I, you know, I certainly... This was a wake-up call. We've got a lot of work to do, and I assure you, knowing my colleagues in the administration, it's not something that we're going to let slide without doing something about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Riordan. Council Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hope, I want to thank you for coming up here. I know I spoke to you a couple of times, you expressed your concerns. We've done the best that we could. Hopefully, when we get this plan together, we'll have a more proactive approach. But in the meantime, if you come across problems, please contact Ira or myself, and we'll do our best.
Thank you.
Or any of us.
Thank you, Council Morabito. With that said, I hope we've entertained your...
The biggest part of it, well, the fact, the main thing was the fright of towns.
I understand that, and that is, it's not just a fire, a medical emergency, or anything else.
And then, in fact, it was not a long...
I agree 100% and...
I know it was a bad year, and I know we had problems, but still, a phone problem, phone call.
I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention, and again, I feel confident that the mayor will look at this and address the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Madam Clerk, this will be placed on file.
Calendar item number five, motion presented by the City Council. In accordance with the provisions of Section 3 of Chapter 147 of the Acts of 2004, the City Council shall immediately order an election to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the unexpired term of Ward One City Councilor due to the passing of Councilor Richard A. Penta.
I just want to put one thing out there, that this is something that by mass general laws were required to do, and it's a sad thing that we have before us, but we're going to authorize the Election Commissioner this evening to call for that. All in favor? Councilor Novoselsky?
Do we know what date this is going to happen?
I've spoken with the Election Commissioner, and she has asked for a period of a maximum of 60 days to call for the election, to get everything set up. I would imagine that this probably will take place sometime in May, probably mid-May. And that's... She needs that time to get advertised and get...
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ballots printed, et cetera. All right, Madam Clerk?
Late motion presented by Councilor Novoselsky, that the mayor authorize the reimbursement of the city towing fee, the amount of $30, and the balance of towing costs over the agreed amount, $90, between the city and G&amp;J Towing. Also, that those vehicles not towed to a tow yard and just relocated on the street be reimbursed 50% of the $90 tow fee, or $45. These vehicles only include those towed prior to the code-red notification on the evening of February 25, 2015.
Councilor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we had a situation on Thornton Street where all of a sudden, five G&amp;J tow trucks showed up with, you know, a police officer, and all of a sudden started towing cars out of snowbanks. I didn't mind this happening, because we know these cars were there for 72 hours, which is the ordinance. But we're in a neighborhood where it's very diverse. A lot of people don't speak English and don't know the rules. So my play was, at least notify the people of what's going to happen. And I talked to the chief that day, and they towed, I think, seven cars off Thornton Street before the code-red was called, which I emphasized to the chief that I don't mind this happening as long as the people know what's going on. Communication, I've always favored communication, I've dealt with communication, and I expect communication, and that didn't happen. All of a sudden, this is going on, and I'm getting phone calls from all my constituents on Thornton Street. They're doing... They're towing this car, they're breaking this mirror off a car, which, you know, they did fix that car. But what I'm looking for here now, and the chief was not readily convincing... Convinced to do this, but I think based on a lack of communication to the people of Thornton Street, and right now, it's only two vehicles involved, so... And one vehicle, the agreement allegedly between the police department and G&amp;J was $220 to tow the vehicles, $100 to dig it out with a Bobcat, $90 for a tow, which is a normal fee, and $30 for the city fee. So that's $220. And the drivers from G&amp;J were telling some people, oh, you got to pay me $400 cash, $500 cash, and I was just wondering where the $200 agreement was. And so what I'm looking for, and some vehicles were charged $220 and weren't even towed back to the yard. They were moved on the street, and they still took $220 for them. Even when we have street sweeping, the tow truck driver will drop the vehicle in another street, another part of the street, for half the price. And that's all I'm looking for here, was just a relocation on the street to $45. And I think this is sharp money. I don't think there should be a problem here. And like I said, I've only heard from two people right now. One person did not want to pursue it because they were afraid of retributions, and the other people, I have not heard from the other five people. So I'm looking for this for, you know, for these two constituents on Thornton Street for that day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Are there any other councils that want to... Councilor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to be the bad guy here, but unfortunately, I'm speaking to some police officers, they really didn't start towing these cars like the three weeks buried after the snowstorm, which I think gives people ample time to shovel out their cars. And my only fear is that if you allow it for two people, and word gets out, you're going to get bombarded with other people coming forward and wanting their money back. And by right, the police, for public safety reasons, operated... Were doing the proper thing here. As far as if the councilor heard there was allegations of wrongdoings, I mean, that could be brought forward. And in the future, I go along with is that they don't do it after... These vehicles won't be towed until after the code-red. But I just think that in the past, that the police acted properly, and we don't want to open up a can of worms here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Patch. Councilor Janino?
Thank you. I have to say, I agree with Councilor Patch. You know, if you talk about public safety, like we did earlier tonight, and talk about having fire apparatus and vehicles getting up streets, if there are cars stuck in ice for three weeks, they're blocking the road, and you can't plow, and you can't clear snow, and you can't make way for emergency vehicles if you can't get up a road. And if you have a driver's license and a vehicle registered in Revere, you should know the rules of your neighborhood. And it's very unfortunate, and I apologize for the people affected, but I know for a fact that all cars are tagged. I've driven by many cars with the tags on the window because there's about three square inches of window visible from the cars that are buried in the snow, and they've sat there for one week, two weeks, three weeks, and I understand that there are circumstances where you cannot, you know, get your car out right away, or maybe you have multiple vehicles. But when do we say enough's enough? You know, what if it was an abandoned vehicle? How do you handle it? So you can't do for one and not for all, so I respectfully disagree with this. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Janino. Council Guanasso?
I have a situation in Folsom Street where some neighbors were complaining about an individual who was parked there throughout the whole storm. I think that these people should be towed. I think that rightfully so, because you got your good law-abiding citizens out there that are doing the right thing, cleaning out their properties, cleaning out the sidewalks, and making certain that their vehicles are... If a car's not used for three weeks, then they're using the public street for a parking lot, and that's not right. And I think that certainly, we've got to service the rest of the community. I hear what Councilor Novoselsky is saying, and certainly, some of those tactics used by these individuals shouldn't be tolerated by the city of Revere at all. But any car that's been there for three, four weeks after a storm, I think there should be something, an ordinance, the city going to remove them and charge the individual. And as far as the language barrier, these individuals got a driver's license, so they had to know some sort of language to drive an automobile. So I don't go for that either. I think that it's about time, and I don't want a dictatorship type of thing. I just think that reasonable approach to everything is the best solution, and I think anybody, after three weeks of a snowstorm, that automobile should automatically be towed.
Thank you, Council Guanasso. Madam Clerk? Council Novoselsky?
I'd just like to clarify some things. Number one, this is a communication issue. Now, there are many rules in this city that a lot of us don't know about, and the mayor always stresses communication. We communicate everything, and code-red has been doing everything in this city, right from day one, over the last eight years, seven years. And I would think that this should have been a code-red issue immediately, not a day later, to give these people a chance to get their cars out of there. So that's number one. These cars were not blocking fire access. They were against the curb. They were out of the way. Should they have been towed? Absolutely. Just notify them of what's going on. That's all I ask. And, you know, it's... These vehicles were before the notification. They came in like gangbusters, and I thought it was wrong the way... I was down there when it happened, and tow drivers were rude, swearing at people, and there were pictures taken, and they threatened the people that if they put it on Facebook, they will sue them. Totally uncalled for. I was there when it happened. There were no tags put on these cars. No tags. They came in, I understand that they drove around a couple of days before to look at the vehicles, to see what vehicles were there, or where there was a vehicle. I had a vehicle on my street that I had towed out the other day, because it was there for the 72 hours. The officers came down, they tagged it, they were ready to tow it, the person saw the tag in the window, and they got the car out of there. Notification, that's all I ask for, and we're talking to two people here, folks. We're talking only before the code-red. Only before the code-red, and it's very specific to that effect. So I would ask that you look out for these two people that, you know, had their vehicles towed, and a couple of them unjustly. So please, give the people of the city a break too. And my... And Ward Two.
Mr. President, one thought on that, Ira, is that a lot of people, new people to our community, don't have land phones, so in effect, they're not getting code-red. So that's another determination, how we have to transmit some sort of communication to people who don't have land phones. I don't know how we go about doing that, but quite a few people don't have land phones.
Mr. President, just clarification from Council Guanasso.
Councilor?
Cell phones are also included in the code-red, because I get it on my cellphone also. I get it by email. So there's multiple ways that this happens, but this isn't a case that they didn't get the call. There was no call made. So in this particular case, for these people, no call was made, no prior notification was given. We notified when we're cleaning streets, when we're plowing streets, when we're having snow emergency bans. This was not code-readed, and no signs were put on any of the vehicles. Thank you.
Counselor, I understand your frustration. I'm not opposed to someone being reimbursed if their car was unjustly towed. However, I really think that this is opening up a Pandora's Box for anyone that had their car towed.
Mr. President, we offered all the... This was before the code-red. They didn't tow anybody once they stopped this procedure.
Can they verify this was before the code-red?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The code-red was made on the night of 216, 215, and you got it, and everybody here got it.
Well, I'm... Councilor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand, you know, my fellow Ward counselor, that these particular two cases, but I'm sure there was plenty of cars towed for numerous reasons during the storm before that code-red. And I just think that we go forward in the future, if it's a... They do put a code-red out before they do any towing, but I just... They were... But I just, they were towed legally, first of all, and how, you know, how do you justify, how do you justify giving them money back? I'm sorry, I just, I think for public safety reasons, it's, it can be done in the future. We're going to change some rules here, and hopefully, in the near future, or before the next season of storms. But what happened, happened, and I just don't feel that the, we can open up this can of worms here. Thank you.
Well, I, you know, I've spoken to the mayor prior to this about notification of residents, and I know he's in agreement to having a flashing light put in certain sections of the city that would be visible to everyone, similar to, I go driving to Winthrop occasionally, they have a blue light there that flashes, and that indicates that the street being on parking. What I would suggest, Council Novoseltsky, is that these individuals, they must have receipts for when they were towed, take the dates on the receipts, go to the mayor's office, and have him contact whoever is responsible, whether it be the legal department or whatever, and make arrangements to reimburse these individuals if their car was in fact towed illegally. I understand your frustrations, Counselor, but I cannot support a motion that would, we would make to direct the mayor to notify, to reimburse these individuals. If I, again, what I'm suggesting is, if you want to amend the motion to that, fine. That these individuals get receipts with the date and the timestamped on them, go to the mayor's office, determine when the code red was made, and if in fact that is the case, to reimburse them.
So noted, if you will.
On the motion?
Roll call.
File an appeal to the-
Do a file notice of claim.
Whichever way you have to do it, to the mayor's office, going to the mayor's office.
Similar to a defense of something that's damaged, yeah.
To appeal, appeal to the mayor directly.
Call the roll, please.
Could you read that, please?
Yeah, can, tell us what the motion now reads, please.
The motion now reads that whoever was towed illegally, get a receipt-
Mr. President, just a clarification. They weren't towed illegally.
I'm not saying they were or they weren't. I'm not going to make that determination.
It's kind of a moral issue, but, you know, they really weren't-
I can't make that determination.
-towed illegally, because they were there over 72 hours.
But they proved that they were towed illegally prior to the code red. Go to the legal department, the clerk's office, the mayor's office, whoever is responsible, file a claim, and for reimbursement.
You wouldn't need a motion for that.
No, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, but-
Mr. President, with that, with that clarification that I got, have them file a claim against the city, I will deal with that and withdraw this motion. Thank you.
Okay. On the motion?
Calendar item, I'm sorry, this is a late motion presented by Councilor Novoseltsky that the mayor requests the Revere Police Chief and the Traffic Department to publish the towing agreement between any tow company hired by the city during a snow emergency and in violation of the 72-hour abandoned vehicle rule to include the following. One, towing fee to a city-authorized storage facility. Two, towing fee to a non-city facility. Three, relocating a vehicle to another location on the street. Four, cost of removing an abandoned vehicle from a snowbank. Five, city fee for towing. Six, any other potential costs to potentially towed vehicles. This publication must be published in the Revere Journal, Revere Advocate, and Revere TV at the beginning of the snow season. Also, that before any towing under this rule, a code red notification will go out to all residents signed up for code red in Revere.
Council Novoseltsky?
Thank you, Ms. President. Ms. President, this all deals with what we just got through, and it's just a communication process that we should go and let our people know what's going on.
I agree. On the motion?
And I would hope, Ms. President, that this be included in the action plan that we do for snow plowing.
Mr. President, shouldn't this go with public safety to go with the action plan that we're going to have? I think this should go to public safety for review, and then go into-
Well, let's just attach it to the plan already in the process. All in favor? It's not audited.
Thank you.
Late motion presented by Councilor Haas that the mayor requests the Department of Public Works to repair the fence on Malden Street at the Joseph Del Grasso Park. The fence is a public safety hazard to the children who play near the park.
Councilor Haas?
Mr. President, if anyone knows, the fence, okay, across some domenos, between domenos in the sense of Italy, it's very dangerous for the children, because they walk that way, and it protrudes into their walkway. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Haas. On the motion? I have a late motion.
We have a late, late motion presented by Councilor Powers that the mayor and the DPW superintendent be requested to appear before the Public Works Subcommittee to discuss pothole repairs throughout the city.
To actually assess and address potholes, and any additional monies that may be needed due to a deficiency in the Department of Public Works budget be appropriated from the free cash. Counselor Janino?
Thank you. I couldn't agree more with this motion. I'm kind of sad it was put in so late, because I would have liked to prepare a little bit more on it, but this is a huge issue in our city, and the spring is approaching, and it's a season that we need to get rid of the potholes, because there are more than just four-way vehicles on the road. So, we need to work on that, and it's a huge safety hazard. There were some potholes in the city that you could lose a tire in, so I hope that we address it and hopefully come up with a comprehensive plan. But I must say, that app, the See, Click, Fix app, if you don't have it, you should download it, because I've reported many potholes on that, and within two or three days, I've driven by and they've been filled. So, definitely take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janino. There is no further business before the council. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, and our next council meeting will be on the 23rd of March at 6:00 PM. Thank you and good evening. Oh, and by the way, by the way, I want to wish all of the citizens of Revere a happy St. Patrick's Day tomorrow.